Regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. The members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. The roll call, Ms. Sardikin?
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Ms. Gottlieb?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krantz?
Here.
Ms. Sanzicca?
Here.
Mr. Shevki?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Item two is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion, Mr. Tagle, supported by Mr. Patley.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Ms. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Krantz?
Yes.
Ms. Sanzicca?
Yes.
Mr. Shevki?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Number three is the minutes of the August 26, 2014 Planning Commission Special or Study Meeting. Through motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Shevki, in support?
In support.
Mr. Patley?
Ms. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krantz?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzicca?
Yes.
Mr. Shevki?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. Number four is public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. If there's anyone who wants to address the Planning Commission. If not, we'll go on to item five, the zoning ordinance text amendments. Potential zoning text amendments, GB general business and CB community business, zoning ordinance amendments. Who's going to kick this off?
Ben will probably, Ben will kick it off, but as usual, we'll tag team it. I'll chime in and take over for a while and, you know, be obnoxious and then we'll, you know, we're truly we're all that way.
Does that make you the bad cop?
We do that a lot in meetings. We want to play the good cop and play the bad cop. So this is a follow-up discussion. I have a short, short presentation and really just summary of the memo that was painted out. This is a follow-up discussion that we started with the city council back in February, if you remember this. And why are we doing this? Well, a ton of the master plan in the zoning ordinance is protection of single-family residential properties. And as such, zoning must reflect a relationship between the allowable height of commercial buildings and the building setback and the green belt from residential properties. This in part must be balanced with development potential with the protection of adjacent properties. The reason this has started to bubble up is we're starting to see the fruits of our labor. You know, we adopted the master plan, which allowed for increased development, increased height, and that was reflected in the change of the zoning ordinance. Well, we're getting the type of development that we had tried to get, and that's more density, more intensity. But at that, there is still the balance to protect adjacent neighbors, and there's been a few developments that have come in that have kind of perked the interest of some of the adjacent properties, and so we're kind of looking at this issue. We can talk about that later. So we really recognize about four areas of potential conflict. The first, and which really spurred this discussion, was GB and CB zoning along Rochester Road. It's this location here. We had this discussion earlier. Every single GB and CB property backs up or is adjacent to residential property. The next side, next area of conflict is the north side of Big Beaver between Coolidge and Rochester. It's really these properties that are abutting. The only area we've really had an issue with is the Alpine and McClure PUD, where experts come out and talk about the potential impact upon them. Other than that, since I've been here, we haven't had any neighbors in these neighborhoods that have come out against the development of Big Beaver. But it is an area where there could be some potential issues moving forward.
But if you look historically at that depth, point again with the pointer, I mean, look at the shallowness of Tom, right? The shallowness of that, I mean, it sticks out in its shallowness.
I'm in that shallow.
You're in that shallowness.
Yeah. Well, and also it's worth mentioning that the properties on Big Beaver obviously are much deeper as well, so they can provide additional buffer from the residential than you have in some of these properties on Rochester Road. The third area, which we haven't got into so much conflict or areas of friction yet, are these form-based district nodes. And obviously, there are 22 or 22 of these throughout, spread throughout the city. They're located on the intersection of major mall roads, and their purpose is really to provide neighborhood commercial developments to serve the adjacent neighbors. But they are in proximity, most of them, if not all of them, are in proximity to adjacent residential properties. And lastly, is the north side of Maple Road between Liverneystevenson. It's this small clip right in here. It's behind the property we spoke at last media on Maple Choppin Lane. It's behind the properties across Maple from the MJR Development. It's that area in that location. So those are the four areas where we see where there's going to be, there is potential for conflict between adjacent land uses.
There's also another one that we probably should, there's one on Big Beaver right here. You see how it's, it's a lot, this jump up down here. And this portion down here, the Big Beaver Killer PV is in here.
Yes.
And there's a piece in here that's owned by the Garrettts, who were tragically killed in a plane crash a number of months ago, where the property's actually master planned for Big Beaver but not zoned Big Beaver. So, I mean, there's a potential for that as well.
So just a little background, the comparison between the old ordinance and the current ordinance. The old ordinance, most of the property, and this is really only looking at Rochester Road mostly, was zoned, the former B3. It had a 40-yard front yard setback, a 30-foot rear, which is similar to what we have now, a zero side, and 25 abutting residential. We have 20/20, so it's pretty comparable now. The biggest difference between these is it gets down to the maximum height for the GB district. Under the old B3, you can only do three stories at 40 feet. Under the GB, you can do now five stories, 75 feet. That's the self-storage building came under this GB zoning. The CB is two stories, 30 feet. It's actually a reduced amount of height than what the B3 formula allowed. And the form-based district varies based on whatever building form you're proposing, and it varies from a maximum of three stories all the way up to really to no maximum for some of the building forms. Again, the minimum could be a story, but the maximum is three stories to no maximum heights. So generally, the B3 is generally more restrictive than the GB and the CB and the form-based districts. The creation of the GB and the form base were made to spur investment, which we're seeing, and require a more desirable form of development, specifically the form base where the property's set close to the street. It's important to note that this desired development, specifically the form-based zoning, if we want mixed use and pedestrian compatibility and all that orientation, really does require some massing and some intensity, and density as well. And I want to, I just want to remind everyone here that the creation of the GB and the form base wasn't done in a vacuum. These were done through a direct result of the guidance that we all took in the master planning process and then codified in the zoning ordinance. So this didn't come out of, out of the sky. With all that said, there are some zoning ordinance options that we're going to present for the Planning Commission, and there's two height options to consider and two setback options to consider. The first height option is simply reducing the permitted height in the building, I'm sorry, in the form-based districts, the general business district and/or the commercial business district. So as I noted earlier, in the commercial zoning, you have a two-story, 30 feet, the CB, 5 feet, 75 in the business district, and then the building forms obviously vary based on the type. So the Planning Commission may consider reducing the maximum stories in height for any of the districts, or it might pick certain ones that they want to choose to lower or raise, et cetera. The pros of this is it reduces building height. It simply lowers the building height. The con is that it really arbitrarily picks what building heights are going to be reduced, and this is especially along Big Beaver. And it also reduces the development potential. I mean, one thing we're asking, especially on Big Beaver, is for more height, more density. So that's the first option to consider for height. I'll move on to the second one, unless anyone has any questions. The second option is to reduce the permitted height for any non-residential use that is abutting to or in proximity to residential use. Basically, what we're saying is establish a formula that limits the height based on its proximity to residential property. So basically, a general thumb is the closer you are to residential property, the lower building has to be. If the Planning Commission does go down this road, what we do recommend is that there should be some provision that allows the Planning Commission to grant some relief from this restriction, so that they, these can be reviewed on a case-by-case basis if it warrants a relief of the height restriction. This is an example I put in. This is actually something we've adopted in two other, two other communities that we work in. And basically, what this example is, is that if you are abutting to a residential zoned or used parcel, and you're not separated by an alley or street, the height of your building cannot exceed 30 feet in height. It's just a flat, no, you cannot exceed 30 feet. However, if you're not, I'm sorry, this is right here, I'm this first part right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Cannot exceed 30 feet in height. If you're a building that's a parcel that is not abutting but is within 200 feet, it's kind of the parcel in front of the parcel, you cannot exceed 40 feet in height. And then between 200 and 300 feet, you cannot exceed 50 feet in height. And again, we do recommend that these maximum height restrictions can be deviated by the Planning Commission through a public, public hearing-type process, similar to a special use. So how this works, this is my, this is, I'm not an architect, John, so I apologize for this graphic, but how it works is it's simply, you're abutting, your building can go no more than 30 feet. You're not abutting, but you're within 200 feet, your maximum is 40 feet. And conversely, if you're within 300 feet, your maximum, you can be no more than 50 feet. Now, I will say that in some districts, such as the CB, your maximum is already two stories. So you, this wouldn't allow the Planning Commission to grant relief above what that maximally set in zoning ordinance is. It would simply be these buffer areas, you know, that are adjacent or close, where that maybe the maximum is not advisable since it's next to residential. I do want to note, it's worth noting that this is a, I think you have the handout. The blue, outline blue is 300-foot properties, and the interior blue colors are 200-foot buffers. Most property that's commercially zoned is within either 200 or 300 feet of residential property. So if we went down this road, it would impact a number of properties. So a pro of this is it does strategically reduce building heights based on the proximity to residential. A con of doing this is it greatly reduces development potential, and especially for those developments that are along Big Beaver, Maple Road, and the nodes, we're trying to get a little more intensity, a little more height, a little more dorm development activity. The other cons, it does require staff and the applicant to calculate distance and apply the height formula. It's a very minor con, but just, it's a little bit more of an administrative burden. We do find that this might be appropriate for some form-based districts, such as the nodes. I don't think we recommend this necessarily on Big Beaver and Maple Road at this time. However, we do note that every GB property is adjacent to residential, so it might just make more sense just to effectively reduce the GB height rather than apply this formula to the GB district. Any questions? Yes?
The 30 and 40 and 50, how are those numbers picked?
It's simply numbers we chose. I mean, it could be 40, 50, 60, it could be 20, 30, 40. It's just more a talking point, to be honest.
In your other communities, was there any consideration as to what height, excuse me, the residential properties, were they two-story, single-story?
No, it was, they're mostly two-story, so they're mostly a 30-foot height to begin with. So the point was, if it's adjacent, it's consistent height with the residential properties.
Is that statement true about Troy or about the communities?
Yeah, I was, I was speaking.
Is the average two-story home 30 feet tall?
The maximum, I believe the maximum height in the R1A is 30 feet, so it's comparable.
Yes, the difference, Karen, is that when, most commercial properties have a flat roof. Most residential properties have a sloped roof. The measurement of height in our zoning ordinance is from the midpoint of the, as a sloped roof, midpoint. So in most cases, even if it's a 30-foot maximum, your actual house peak for most houses' roof is actually higher than 30 feet. But for, for commercial properties, it's 30 feet across the top. So there, so in essence, you might have a residential property where the height of the roof is actually 35 feet, but how it's measured, it's only measured at 30 feet.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Yes.
On Stevenson Highway, is that one of the areas that could be impacted because on the, on the west side, we're, we're abutting residential areas? And I know there was a big subdivision up or when those two hotels, two hotels went in there, and under this new ordinance, I wonder if they would have been able to, you know?
They would. They actually, I tested this against those two hotel properties. I also tested it against the self-storage building. And this formula wouldn't, unless you reduce the height in those zoning districts, this formula would not affect those properties. Because there is that 75-foot residential buffer already in the GB district. Thank, thank you, Ben.
And the zoning, in that, in the instance along Stevenson, the zoning was not CB or GB or a form base, it was OM.
Okay, that's true.
So it was a different zoning classification.
What is the current status of the 1-800 mini-storage? We proved that a long time ago. I don't see any activity there at all.
My understanding is they're looking at acquiring additional abutting property.
You mean additional into the residential area or?
No, no, the status is that they received Florida Site Plan approval and specialist approval, and it doesn't expire for five years, so they still have plenty of time. That's the status. So where, if there are, if there are significant changes proposed, then we'll come back to Planning Commission. At this time, I really have nothing to report.
And the other thing was, there was a rumor about a potential environmental issue. Is that, is that still on the radar or what?
I don't know what that rumor is.
A flume, there was a flume from the gas station down the street.
They would have to meet, they would have to meet all, all engineering requirements, including verification that there's no contaminants on the site.
The 30-foot kind of is an oddball number in commercial, because the likelihood of getting a three-story and 30 feet would be kind of difficult with any kind of a parapet or any kind of a wall around the perimeter. So most likely would limit to 20, two-story.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I mean, this, I, we chose 30 as a talking point. We could raise it to 40 feet if it's abutting. I'm just throwing out the, the point was, was just talk about creating a formula where, based on the proximity to residential, you reduce the height.
I think Tom brings up a good point, that when we do, if we go down this road to establish those numbers, let's be practical for someone that would buy that property, you know, whether it's a two-story or a three-story capability. Good point.
And where we land, you know, the easiest way to do this right now is simply, let's look at reducing the GB height. And that's, that's the easiest way, because you already have the protection of 75 feet and you simply can reduce that. That's the cleanest, easiest way to do this right now. But looking forward to the other zoning districts, Planning Commission should maybe want to consider these other formulas and setbacks, we'll talk about in a second.
And Rochester Road is the GB district?
Majority of Rochester Road is zoned as GB. The southern, there's some southern parts closer to Big Beaver, which are zoned as CB, which is the two stories, 30 feet. Yes?
So the, so the size or configuration of the building, A, B, C, D, that's only for the Big Beaver district, right?
The Big Beaver and the neighborhood nodes and Maple Road.
So basically, looking at this table, because there's the requirement of a 75-foot setback from the building to residential, even if you went three stories at 40 feet, you're almost, there's almost a double setback requirement if you go 40. So it's, it's not 80 feet, but it's 75 feet. So, so it's almost, the requirement's almost that the setback's equal to the double height, the maximum height.
Yeah, and, yeah. Okay. Kind of part and parcel this is the issue of building setback and green belt. And I'll go over, there's really two options we thought about, we considered for this one. Basically, similar to height, establishing a building setback and a green belt. And building setback is actually the face of the building. Green belt is the landscape area between parking or drive aisle and the property line. So there are two separate setback buffer considerations. So establishing a building setback in green belt does not commensurate with height. So currently in the CB and the GB, it's 75, shall be no closer than 75 feet from single-family residential. However, there's no such setback in any of the form-based districts. You can essentially build up to 10 feet from the rear property line. You have to have a 10-foot green belt. But you can put your rear, your building 10 feet from the property line. It is worth noting that because of the form-based requirements, we require the building to be pulled up front, close to the street, 10 feet. The likelihood of having a building that extends all the way to the rear to be 10 feet is very unlikely, but there is no rear setback in the form-based district. So an ordinance amendment simply could be, non-residential buildings shall be setback in certain number, whatever number we land on, feet from residential property line, or some property line of any residential district, similar to what we have now in GB and CB, 75 feet, we can keep that moving forward. In addition, we should, we could increase the non-residential green belt. The green belt for non-residential is only 10 feet. So what that means is you could have, let's take the self-storage, for example. They had their drive aisle and their parking 10 feet from the rear property line, and they only had a 10-foot landscape strip there, and that's the maximum that we could require at the time. So even if we do not increase the building setback, I think we should consider increasing the green belt requirements for non-commercial properties adjacent, I'm sorry, non-residential properties adjacent to residential properties. So the pros of this is it does increase building setback and green belts. The cons, again, it arbitrarily establishes a setback in green belts, not based on any of the development types, and it does reduce development potential, because you're taking away a building, building area. Similar to heights, the set, the option number two is to establish a formula that creates an increase in building setback and green belt based on the height of the proposed not, of the proposed commercial building. Similar to height, we do also recommend considering a provision that requires the Planning Commission to deviate from these restrictions on a case-by-case basis. And I actually put into, I think you remember, I put in standards under which the Planning Commission would consider deviation from these. There should be some sort of review process in order for the Planning Commission to grant relief from this.
That's similar to a special use request?
It would be very similar to special use, yep. Again, we threw these numbers out there just for discussion, but we can talk about it. So when a commercial parcel abuts residential, the building setback, the side of the building shall be no less than the height of the proposed building or 20 feet, whichever is greater. When a commercial parcel abuts residential, a minimum of 20 feet landscape green belt shall be maintained. Again, right now, it's only a 10-foot requirement deviation by the Planning Commission. This is how this works. You have a 30-foot high building, your building setback must be equal to the height of the building at 30 feet, you have a 20-foot green belt. If you increase your building height to 40 feet, you have a 40-foot setback, and your green belt is 20. This is more restrictive than what we have in the form-based districts for building setback to height. It's less restrictive than what we have in the CB and the GB zoning district. That's 75 feet setback. The green belt is increased from what we have under the current regulations. We only have 10 feet. This provides for 20 feet. I think that's, all right. The pros, it does strategically increase setback green belt. The cons, it reduces development potential, and especially for any tall buildings that we might get on Big Beaver and Maple Road. If you have a 10-story building on Big Beaver, if we ever get one, it would require a 100, 120-foot setback, which might be appropriate, depends on the building. So, questions?
I'm curious on Big Beaver. You know, I drive up and down Big Beaver, and it looks pretty full to me. I mean, how much available land is there really on the Big Beaver corridor for someone who wanted to put a really tall 10-story or more building on? In terms of just practicality, is there even land for someone to even do that?
There's not a lot of vacant, non-built.
But someone could come in and knock something down?
Knock something down and put something there.
Okay.
But it could be an infill building.
Right.
And some of those could be, I don't think there's any restriction on hotel.
What's an infill building?
Within the same property, the same property, same, same year, an office complex or a hotel that is way back from Big Beaver. You could put, you know, a restaurant or a, even a multi-story building up front, closer to Big Beaver.
Okay, so you're saying like the Somerset Inn could use part of its parking lot and let an Applebee's park there?
Sure.
Okay.
Or we could have, an example could be the DMC Children's Hospital, where it was a one-story building, demoed, and there's a three-story building in its place, or it could have been higher than three. Their challenge was, without a parking deck, you're really limited in terms of parking, how big your lot, your lot size limits how high you can be, how you can be, basically. But the parking deck, parking deck's the great equalizer, because if you deck park, now, now you're not, that, that's, that doesn't control.
Small footprint.
The footprint doesn't control, but the parking deck, you can go higher. It's very expensive.
Could Troy Park, Mr. Tagle? Could you go back to your graphic, Ben, with the setbacks and the green belts?
You're impressed by it, weren't you?
I was. I gotta look at it a second time. Are we basically saying by those requirements that the parking is going to either be on the side yard or in the front yard? There's not enough room to park, right? When you subtract 30 from 20 or even 40 from 20.
Yeah, that's just, the, well, 20, you could get a row of parking in here, but you couldn't get a row of parking.
You gotta drive.
Yes, so that's a good point. So, again, these are minimums, so yeah, most of the parking would be, either you could pull this building back or you could park on the side.
Or park underneath, or, you know, I mean, but basically, we're saying there's no parking in the back, in the rear of the building.
If we kept, if we increased, if we increased the green belt, yeah. Yep. Well, I think that's, I'll use, let's use the, let's use the mini-storage as an example. Was it more appropriate to have the parking on the side in front and that, and move it away from the residential, residential park, residential parcels in the back and increase the buffer? Or is it better to have the parking in the back than in the front?
Well, I just want to, I mean, we've, we've seen what parking in the front will do on big developments. We have asphalt, a portion of asphalt with weeds. So there's, there's, there needs to be a balance or consideration, that's, I guess, my own, my own point.
I think it also depends on the intended use, with the, in case of mini-storage, there were very few trips a day, you know, and spaced out over the entire operating day, so the impact to residents was certainly minimized by that, so.
There are consequences of any of these options. And... And, you know, is parking, is a parking lot abutting residential better than a building behind or next residential? Would you rather have your parking there or your building there? I mean, that's kind of one of the questions to consider. If you increase the green belt, then it does push parking potentially towards the front of the building.
The interesting thing about the GB versus the other, the other ones, is the line, the depth line on Rochester's been established and it's not going to change. It's, it is what it is, it's been there for years and it's not going to change. On, on Big Beaver, on Maple, there are some, some areas where there's more flux. There's more potential for, for, for projects to occur that we're not quite sure where that line's going to be. But Rochester, we know where the line is. So that's just kind of a, an interesting fact.
Except that, you know, developer might decide, you know, because he wants an intended use, he might decide to buy the adjacent residential properties.
In that case, it would have to be a.
And these are over-established stuff.
That would, that would in all likelihood involve the rezoning, then it's, then we, it gets a little, it becomes legislative, it opens up a whole other set of challenges.
You know, that, that gets back to the point of why we keep saying that there should be a deviation along by the planning commission. Because realistically, you're going to review these on a site plan, by site plan basis. And establish minimums and then the planning commission make the determination of what's appropriate or not. And you do that in a public forum, such as a.
Absolutely, and I think that a lot of this would restrict the development rather than encourage the development. So we want to be flexible, and flexibility is the key.
Yeah. And it, it gets back to the first thing I said, there has to be a balance between allowing development, encouraging development, but also protecting property, adjacent properties and residential properties, and there's a balance with all of these.
Well, I think it would really be an interesting question to some of the residential homeowners associations that are, that might be affected by this. Would they rather have parking adjacent, or would they rather have the building?
Mr. Edmonds, I have both, next to my subdivision. I'm an association homeowner's president.
I understand.
Because I have those medical buildings, right? So I have, and literally in my backyard, I have the eye surgery medical building. So when Brendan was working with our association, I can't think of Brendan's last name.
Kaufman.
Kaufman. When he was working with our association and laying out how the building and the parking would work, one of the things that he did was he, he took that parcel of land and he dug it down. And then created a wall that was kind of taller, of brick, to meet the slope than that was in my backyard. And so by doing so, the cars that park and then face in the direction of my house and my neighbor's house hit a wall. I don't ever have to see their headlights when they roll in at six o'clock in the morning for prep on a seven o'clock surgery. And then on the, on the building, on the side of the building that faces the neighbors further down, and two of them having a pool in the backyard, he made sure that that side of the building was all brick with only skylights at the very top portion of the building along the roof line, so that they could have natural light. But no one is looking out of the building and into any of the neighbors' backyards. So the flexibility allows, you know, any developer to work with neighbors.
And that's why you have developers that, that, that we strongly encourage, that they just don't build something or, or come in for approval without having talked to those neighborhood associations.
So in reality, we're not really all that bothered. I mean, because I don't have headlights and I don't have people looking in our backyards.
Just a little bit of history, what Mitch Cruz is referring to is our very first conditional zoning application, where Mr. Kaufman actually visited Karen and her husband, walked the site, because the requirement at the time was that he was required to put a, we call it a zoning law, along, along the property line. And Karen and her husband did not want a wall because it was going to negatively impact the trees on, on both properties. So one of the conditions of approval was, he had to seek a variance from the zoning law requirement. He actually walked the site, and they, they staked where the trees were going to go, what type of species, what size, et cetera. And they came up with an amicable solution for, for screening that both sides could, could live with, and, and so.
So can you write that into an ordinance?
This was a conditional rezoning application, but the point, the point being that there was, there is, there was flexibility, creativity. For example, the one neighbor with the pool said, "I have a fifteen-year-old daughter who's some days outside of my pool every day. I don't want someone from the office building watching my," she, her words, not mine. Watching my daughter lay in the sun. So one of the conditions was, like you said, the frosted glass that you can't see up. So I guess the point is, in, in this instance, there was, there was a negotiation, there was a way to take a creative design solution to, to a problem. And so it comes back to Mr. Strauss's point that it's, every, every, every application's different and every solution is different. So that's where allowing the planning commission some flexibility would be a good thing.
Right now, we're going to be confronted with problem sites. Every site is a problem site, for the majority, ninety percent, so flexibility is going to be a key.
Yeah.
If we're going to develop.
Right.
We either stand still or we go forward.
You know, even on that site, if you go further to the west, the topography changed from the hill.
It did, it did.
But Tadian, in conjunction with us, we put up an eight-foot, I believe, a brick retaining wall, which also effectively shielded all the headlights and the parking in the back.
Yep. So, so something to keep in mind, I indicated before that the, along Rochester at least, that the line is barring, barring some applications for rezoning. The line, the line's kind of set between, for the most part, between Big Beaver and Waddles. However, you know, last meeting, Mr. Kiesling was in, and he was talking about his, his concern that we're getting too much, too much retail. You know, my, my opinion is that with the new retail, which is higher quality and nice materials, et cetera, it challenges the old retail to, to reinvest or to maybe.
Repurpose.
Get repurposed, so. And we're going to see, I, I believe we're going to see more, you know, repurposing of properties along, along Rochester Road. One of the things we're trumpeting is mixed use, you know? First floor retail, second floor residential, first floor retail, second floor office. That comes with it, you know, there's an extra story of height. So I think we're going to see repurposing, and we're going to see more kind of creative type of projects. So this height issue, I don't think's going away. It's, it's, it's not going away, and it's something that we do conceptually embrace. We like the idea of vertical mixed use. But we don't like the idea of a seventy-five-foot tall building next to residential neighborhood. So there's, there's a balance in there somewhere, so that's, that's what this is all about.
Well, at one time, we tossed out having the setback at the rear, the rear setback next to the residential areas be some kind of ratio to the height of the building. Have we abandoned that?
Well, that's what this does. Should be no less than the height of the proposed building. I mean, you could make it twice the height of the building. You could make it half of the height of the building. I mean, there's, the ratio you can play with is the fact of, should there be an increased setback for buildings adjacent to residential? And should it be based on the height of the proposed building?
You could, could you go back to the first table where it showed the comparison? Keep going. Yeah, right here. You, you could almost make, make an argument that no building should be closer than seventy-five feet from the boundary of a single family residential zoning district. You could, you could make an argument, that's kind of arbitrary. It's, it's perhaps too much distance. Well, again, with, if you, if you have a, depending what the use is with a, with a six or eight-foot wall, with green, with, with landscaping, with green belt, seventy-five feet, if it's, if it's only a, you know, twenty-foot tall building, that's a pretty significant, pretty significant distance. I appreciate that, that they're more intense, but it's, it just seems to be, the number is arbitrary. It's just, it's, it's not flexible, it's not based on anything except seventy-five feet. It's not related, it's not related to a setback, to a height, it's just seventy-five feet. I think, I think the, with, with the setback, it, related to the height, it ties it together. So maybe it's seventy-five feet, maybe it's more, maybe it's more than seventy-five feet, depending on what the height of the building is. It's a sliding scale, depending on what that is.
Or it could be the function.
It could be the use, the intensity, right, right, right.
Well, I'm of the opinion, you know, as a resident of Troy that has commercial in my backyard, that the one thing that could have probably been done a little better in my situation that wasn't are, are these green requirements, these green belt requirements. Because even though Tadian put that brick wall behind the homes where the topography changed and there wasn't the sloping, and it was just more level, without surrounding greenery, it's just another prison wall.
Yep, you're right.
Minus the barn wire.
Twenty-seven years ago, and I don't think we were as sophisticated as we are today.
Right, absolutely, but I'm just saying, going forward, that, that would be my takeaway. That the green is so important, it just makes such a difference.
A little bit of green, though, as trees age, die.
Sure.
Species disappear. That, once it's in there initially, it looks good until the ages creep up. And then there doesn't seem to be any requirement that those property owners replace the shrubbery, the trees, or any of the green belt. And then you get a sparse area that maybe is worse than having a brick wall.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Hudson, because I, I remember at the 1-800 mini-storage on Rochester, those trees that were in the back of that property, barely on the residential side, had already grown through the wall. And, you know, I don't know how you could have really saved that without, or some huge, how you could save those trees. And the other mitigating factor is, although it's a number, and it, you know, it definitely, there were only three residential properties that were impacted by that, only three. So I think the planning commission made the right decision. But I also understand, you know, the public opinion and the outpouring. And we were pretty much at that joint meeting, we were, left a clear message with the city council that they want, they wanted something done about the height. So if we want to, you know, an amendment to this, we're, it's definitely going to have to be a lowering of height in some, in some respect.
Well, the replacement factor, though, we've got gas stations that have walls that are damaged, and they don't replace them, let alone the vegetation around them. We know that, that's the problem that we've really been wrestling with for some time.
Extremely hard to enforce.
Yeah. But it's not only the greenery, it's the vegetation, the type of vegetation. Is it seasonal, or is it going to be year-round greenery? Are we talking pine? You know, what are we talking about? We have to be more specific. But the problem that we're trying to do is, we're trying to legislate for the worst type developer, it seems to me. Not the ideal, not the one that, that, that happens to me. And that's hard to do. And it's hard to legislate every possible condition.
The only way you could do it is make every, every, every new development be of special use?
Well, it could be, but the key thing is, we want to be also flexible. I mean, I, I think that's one of the keys, and I don't know how they're going to do it, but that's why they get the big dollars.
They're looking for our direction on how they're going to do it.
Well, they're, they're the experts, though. We're the late people.
But yet they've given us several options, so I think it's time to step up and play.
Do we agree that seventy-five feet's too, too high for GB? Given that most of our GBs next to, is along Rochester next to residential?
How many stories is that, Brett?
Five.
Five. I think it's too high.
You think it's fine?
I think it's too high.
Oh, too high, I agree with Mr. Hudson.
Yeah.
I would say seventy-five feet may not be too high, but depending on how far the setback is. If it's three hundred feet away, seventy-five feet's nothing. You know, I'm, you know, I'm saying, if we, we have to be careful about, again, imposing something when, in practically, getting back to Mr. Tagle. You know, you've got to be practical about this stuff, too. You can't, you can't just impose a number without, I think that, you know, some kind of a ratio between the height and the setback should be, should be.
That's what they were showing.
I understand, that's what it is, but I'm just saying, but just to say the seventy-five feet too high, without saying the setback, isolating it as just blanket, seventy-five feet's too high, is, to me, it has to be a ratio.
Let me rephrase that. Given that the GB district, for the most part, we're talking about that area along Rochester Road between Big Beaver and Waddles. I mean, I'm missing some areas, but with a relatively shallow depth. And, and a textbook example of the property we're talking about is the mini-storage, where the height was seventy-five feet, actually, it was actually less than seventy-five, it's.
No, like sixty or seventy-two, or something like that.
But the setback was seventy-five, so it was, it was almost a one-to-one ratio. I would suggest that looking, if, that it's probably too high. Because of the shallowness of the depth along Rochester Road. Now, if, if those properties were wider, were deeper, you know, potentially, with, with setback, with a, with a setback related to the height, yeah, it could work. But I think in that instance, my opinion, but I'm not a planning commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to get the ball moving here, I think something, but, but, you know, it's, it's really up to you to give us.
Can you build in some flexibility?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe a max or a cap of three stories, but the special circumstances, be it environmental or use or whatever, maybe a potential of another story or two, depending on circumstances.
Another thing we did, I didn't include this, is in other ordinances we've written, is we, we cap it at three stories, and we allow the planning commission to grant an additional or two additional stories. Anything more than that, you typically, you don't want to allow the planning commission that much discretion. You allow one or two stories, I trust you guys, but usually, it is a legal issue, if you grant, you grant, if you, if you have unlimited amount of height relief, you grant one or two stories to a special use process. So it, one, requires public notification to three hundred, to property owners in three hundred feet to get notification of the requirement. And two, it's a public hearing. So that allows flexibility for the planning commission to make that determination in a public meeting.
See, if you have seventy feet, and you don't have a twig, that's not far enough. But if you have proper vegetation, you can be forty feet, and you still can't, you won't be able to see it. Just like the example that, you know, through the topography. There's so many ways that that could, and that's why I say, especially users, it's got to be a special condition. We have to give some flexibility, depending on how creative they're going to be.
It's Cruz.
I just want to throw it out there that three hundred feet is nothing. When you're in your backyard and you want to have a barbecue, or you want to enjoy the right to your property, and three hundred feet away from you is a big, tall building and a parking lot, three hundred feet is about this big.
It's a football field.
It's just, it's, it's, it's very.
It's U of M stadium, my gosh.
It's, 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 I'm just, I'm just telling you.
Everybody has different perceptions of distance, I agree.
You could say, yeah, it's a football field, but.
Well, you know, the other, the flip side of your, your position is, what right do you have as a property owner to go beyond your property? I mean, somebody that buys a property.
Not suggesting that I do.
Well, but you're legis, wanting to legislate what the guy next door can do on his property. You know, and I, I think we're trying to hit a compromise here of, of what makes sense for the whole, the greater whole. I know the residence, residential districts are important in this community, it's always business. Without business, this community suffers, the residential district suffers.
Absolutely, and, and, you know, he may have hit the nail on the head when he said, you know, what makes the difference is creating the illusion, either through green space or something, that there is more distance. I'm just saying, in my own personal opinion, and from my own personal experience, the feedback that I heard is three hundred feet, and that, that's, that's nothing. It just feels like it's in your backyard. And so, yeah, there, there needs to be a balance. It just feels like it's in your backyard, and so, yeah, there, there needs to be a balance struck. But, um, I can't entirely embrace the position that business somehow wins out over residential.
Three hundred feet, some of these parcels are not even three hundred feet deep. So you're just saying, no, you can't build anything. I don't think that's reasonable either.
So it's, it's, it sounds like the approach then, at least for, for GB, would be, um, would be capping, capping the, the maximum height at certainly less than this. You know, maybe more in line with, maybe more in line with that, three stories of forty, and maybe you go on additional sto, that's by right. And you go on one additional story, if the trade-off is, uh, you know, higher, higher level of landscaping, higher level of buffering, additional width of green belt, you know, more creative, a creative approach to that upper level, maybe it's frosted glass, like it's, it's a, it's a kind of a.
You have to put in a performance.
Performance give, exactly.
I like what Mr. Hudson's comment, the flexibility, I don't know what you said, but. It's all good, anyway.
Mr. Craig.
Uh, the, uh, one thing I, I mentioned when that storage unit did go up, is why can't we have a step-back building? A lot of cities use that for, you know, for, to allow other buildings to have sunlight or areas on the ground. And maybe that building, I suggested, you know, maybe three stories in the back and four stories up front. It was, it was, you know, that kind of a thing, again, based on the depth of, you know, in other words, not just a setback to the back wall of the building, but also a setback to the, the next story up.
So that's another creative way of, of getting an extra story, you, you get it on, you know, you step it back. And so, yeah, already we got some ideas of how to, how to get that balance where we're not negatively impacting residential, but we're still allowing for flexible and creative.
Then you get, then you get current businesses or existing businesses that are right adjacent to that three or four-story building. That don't want, because they already have moved off, they're moving that right up now. They're, they're, they're gonna say, you know, you can't even see my building. And that's the case of the 1-800 ministory, there's a, um, old residential house that I think is some type of a computer company right next to it.
Brett, don't we have a committee that I'm on, I are on, and a member of the building staff, to consider special allowance for extra height or differences under the zoning code if they offer some amenities which aren't required?
It's, you're talking about the Sustainable Development Review Committee?
Yes.
Which I serve on, you serve on, Mrs. Stratt serves on, our building official serves on, and our engineer serves on, yeah. I don't believe that height is currently one of the standards that, that, that the SDP, uh, committee would review, but I, but the direction is, is, is.
That's sort of mechanism, that could work.
Yes, the, um, the, the difference with that is it's not, it's not actually a public hearing and a special use, it's, it's, it's more informal. But, um, yes, conceptually, it's the same type of thing where there's a trade-off.
Yes.
And there's flexibility and creativity that, that, that goes into, it allows basically, in the IV district, you, you can't park in front of your building, there's no parking lot in IV in front of the building. Unless you go through the SDP, where there's a trade-off, you're allowed to park, but you, you have to creatively come up with sustainable ways to.
We did that, the water works.
Exactly.
Put on a green roof.
Or green roof, or exactly. That's the, the type of approach, but, uh, the only difference, just to clarify, is what we're talking about, that additional height story we're talking about would be special use so that the neighbors are notified and there's an opportunity in a public forum, everyone would be, be able to go.
As a procedure.
Right, right.
Um, beating this to death?
Mr. Gottlieb, did you have something?
Well, the only question that I add about the whole process was, had we looked at, had staff looked at, how that's gonna impact some of those lots on Big Beaver, you said it mainly is gonna impact lots on Rochester Road, but on Big Beaver are some very shallow parcels, like the one that you had mentioned. And if this goes into effect, will that make that economically useless? So, the.
Depends on what we adopt.
With the master plan, we could rezone some of those areas for future rezoning to, to Big Beaver, that are so narrow, so, so shallow. Those could be part of the, uh, the master plan update rezoning.
So we understand, we're not rezoning by amending the master plan?
No, no, no.
This is our map, our guide as to what we should be doing, it's still gotta go through the regular rezoning procedures.
Right, exactly.
We would change the master plan classification of, of the properties.
I think, Mr. Gottlieb, I think we have a little bit less concern for those properties on Big Beaver because they're zone form-based, which requires the building to be built at the right of way. So they're already gonna be closer to the street, so there is wiggle room in the rear to put buffering, et cetera, in there.
My concern was just with those buffers that you're describing, some of those lots are then unbuildable.
It, it would, it would greatly restrict the height permitted because of the proximity to residential, for sure.
So that's why we're, we are, we are, we're not recommend, we're not going down the road of recommending the height setback issue in the form-based districts, this is really just for discussion for most of the GB district. Now, the neighborhood nodes, because they are in neighborhood areas, that might be another place where you wanna consider this height setback requirement, but, but for, for, for Maple Road and for Big Beaver, I, I don't think at this point we're, we're recommending that.
See, I foresee the development, uh, such as the Kreske building, not the Kreske, the Kelly building. That could actually develop into a parking structure behind and a development in front, or right across the street, I could see that happening, receive a sea of asphalt there. There'll be developments there, it's two, you know, that, that's what I was looking at, and that's what he was referring to, and I was saying, Big Beaver corridor, I think there's a lot of developments could happen.
That's really expensive property there too.
Pardon me?
That's really expensive property there.
Absolutely, that's why.
As compared to Rochester Road.
Right, well, that's the reason why parking structures evolve.
That's right.
By the base of the value of the property.
There's, there's really three opportunities along Big Beaver, there's, there's infill of underutilized parking lots, like you said, like, for example, the Kelly building potentially.
Yeah.
There, there is, uh, underutilized, um, there's, uh, underutilized buildings, like, there's one and two-story office buildings where, where, where that could go in.
Be demolished. Some are really, you know, old.
And there's, and there's small pockets of, of vacant land, but, but very, very limited.
Right. But the setback requirements that was established back, back then is no longer what we really want right now. So we want all development up close to Big Beaver. All right, that's what we talked about, and having the world-class street or road.
In, in the instances where it's infill in the parking lot, the die is already cast, you've got a large building that, you've got the, you've got the road, Big Beaver, and you've got a parking lot, then you've got a tall building. So the, the, the tall building's already there, you're just filling in that, that area between the building and the road. So the impacts on residential aren't as great because you're, you're, you're just filling in a parking lot.
And typically those buildings are of a lower or a less intense nature.
Right.
So they're more pedestrian-friendly and that type of thing, yeah.
What confuses me, we're talking about Maple, then we're talking about Rochester Road. You know, I mean, there's really a big difference between the two.
Yeah, and to, to put together something that impacts Rochester and is gonna do the same thing on Maple, I think.
It's kinda hard.
Yeah, one size doesn't fit all.
Well, and we talked about, could you go about the zoning map?
I like what Mike says.
We, we talked, yeah, we talked last meeting, I don't know if you can, I think it was about this area along Maple where really, really shallow, I forget what the depth was, but sixty feet, and we talked about how, you know, it, it really wasn't viable for single-family residential at sixty feet, no one really wants to live there, so it's more speculative. But, but without acquiring the property that abuts it to the north, there wasn't much you could do. And we talked about, you know, there was actually a person in the audience who owned property there, and she said she would support that being rezoned and, and becoming deeper. And so the, in this instance, this is only one example, it's actually, uh, the value of those properties along Maple increases, and so there's an actual payoff to, to the, the person who owns the home. They, they actually, they're happy to sell, they move somewhere else, they get a very high ticket, lots of, lots of cash for their house, it's a win-win.
Really low-value homes.
Low-value home, and it's, and it's, and then the, the city gets more redevelopment, it's newer, we get more depth, it's more viable.
But that's kind of thing that has to be in the master plan update, not, not this.
And, well, it might, this is, I believe this is master planned, I don't have the master plan in front of me. It's actually a master plan for that depth to, to, to happen, I believe. Yeah, I don't want, I don't, I have to verify that, but, um, so, but the, it would have to be rezoned. So, so as Mr. Hudson was indicating, the master plan is the policy, it's the vision, and it's, it lays out, you know, it would, whether the rezoning would be supported or not, but the action to, to make it viable, would, would, the action would have to be rezoning.
Let me throw this out, we've got, uh, we've got the Rochester Road District, we've got a Maple Road District. We've got a, uh, the Big Beaver Development District. Why can't we're concerned about the depth of lots in these two different areas, trying to make one half fits all, put in different requirements, uh, for the two respective districts as part of the master plan? So we don't have to worry about it, it might work on Rochester, but it might not work on Maple.
Well, I, I think we're, we're definitely suggesting that. I mean, we're suggesting that there are different requirements for Maple Road versus the GB or CB. It just depends on where we land on what, what are those, are these based on height, is it based on use? Is it just a flat number, seventy-five feet like we have now? I think that's kind of what we're trying to do.
So this discussion is just on the Maple Road and Rochester Districts then? Or is it citywide?
No, it's citywide, I think.
Yeah, what I'm suggesting that maybe to solve the problem, is a suggestion, is to not make it citywide. Make it germane to the respective districts.
Brett seems to have a problem with the palm reader though, he keeps going over.
He says I have a problem with palm reader. That building's been there a long time. No, not at all, I, I was actually pleased to hear a person who was directly impacted by the discussion to, to support our concept.
Right, right.
It was refreshing.
And certainly.
We've actually lived there before.
And certainly the value of those homes will go up.
Absolutely.
And they will be able to purchase a decent home somewhere else.
But if you remember, we also talked about that if it went all the way to that street, we had to be sensitive to how we treated. Because across the street is residential, so it gets back to, you know, we don't wanna repeat the mistakes of, you know, throwing the baby out with the bathwater, we get, we get the redevelopment and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's great and it's all good, but it negatively impacts the residential, so it's gotta be done right.
The problem is right now, it's not actually viable property to be developed, so.
Right.
Unless you do something to make it more of a, you know. But you can also take care of those adjacent residents across the street by, uh, perhaps different setbacks and stuff like that.
So, so the direction we were given by, by, it was actually in a joint meeting, um, that we all kind of agreed with council. The, the, the priority really was, was, was CB-GB, it was really the, this was really the priority. But, you know, height is, throughout all of the city, is a, a concern, we wanna make sure that there's that balance. So, I think we've got direction for, for how we deal with, with this section here. You know, Ben and I can, can take what we've talked about here and we'll come back with something. I think, again, I think the marching orders, we've, we've, we've talked this to death, um, but we can, we can, we can.
Yeah, we can come back with something.
Come back with something for, for the note, for the form-based. I like the, I like the approach of buy right up to a certain height, and then special use with conditions and with performance requirements to go higher, I like that approach, it's, I think it's innovative and I think it's flexible, and I think it's a win-win.
Okay, um, next is, uh, agenda item six, public comment for items on the current agenda. Do you have anything?
Hey, Michelle, you introduce yourself.
Yeah, hi, my name is Teresa John, and I'm an architect by profession. So I'm doing my urban planning masters in Wayne State.
Oh, awesome.
Great, welcome.
I've come here to see how the planning commission can do this.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, let's move on then, yes.
I was gonna ask to go first, because I got some announcements.
Yes, right, right, go ahead.
You are first.
So, Sienna, the rezoning, um, across Liverny, you've probably heard.
I called.
You called, okay.
I got an email, I needed to know, is it true?
So, so it, uh, the application's been, uh, been pulled, it's dead. Basically, they, um, the, uh, the applicant had a certain amount of time, uh, under the contract, under the purchase agreement, and, and, uh, needed to get an extension, and they weren't, he was not granted an extension, and then, so the, the deal's dead. So, the, uh, Sienna conditional rezoning is, is no, is no longer. Other updates, the, we met, um, our last regular meeting, we talked about a potential PUD on Big Beaver just east of John R, it was a mixed-use, horizontal mixed-use with retail and the front residential behind. Basically, the applicant on the, whose name was on the application, his email was in the application, has been removed from the project. So, we did inform the applicant in writing of the meeting, he, uh, was no longer involved, so he neglected to forward the information on. So no one was at the meeting, but they did, they did have an opportunity to watch the video and listen to everything the planning commission said, and he gave us a concept sketch showing a vastly improved project. So we're simply waiting on an updated complete package, and we'll, we'll, we'll move that along. So you, you, I think you're gonna be pleasantly surprised with what you see. We have, uh, an application for, um, a, a retail strip, strip development on Rochester Road that was, uh, it had some, 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 uh, issues that, it's been revised and it's come back to us, we'll be seeing that very soon. Kreske Foundation submitted an application for an addition, the plans were incomplete, we gave comments to them and we, we told them, yeah, it's about an hour of CAD time and you'll be, you'll be good to go. And that was a month ago, we still haven't got anything back, so, um, really wasn't a lot of heavy lifting involved, Ben, but, but we're waiting. So we're kind of at the mercy, so, there are projects out there that are just kind of waiting to fall that we'll be, we'll be seeing soon. Am I, am I missing anything that's, that's pending? That's, uh, the, the development report wasn't on the agenda, but I thought it was, it was timely, I was gonna mention it.
Okay, let's, uh, end with Mr. Craig.
I was just excited to hear about this, uh, info on this far, I've been for decades wanting to make Big Beaver more walkable, especially across, I mean, across Big Beaver at, at midpoints, uh, other than the mile roads. And this, I'm, I'm just excited to, you know, attend this and see what kind of answers this person can come up with.
Mr. Hudson.
Maybe an update, New King Street and the Perk Row, I-75, that project seems, they cleared some land and seems to be dead in the water right now, do we know what's going on?
Well, yes.
Yeah, we, we do, in, in general terms, we know what's going on.
Let's go ahead.
If you recall, it was a conditional rezoning, and the condition, one of the conditions offered by the applicant was that the timing of, of the development, that the McDonald's construction would coincide with the construction of the middle retail building as well as the construction of the pad on the corner. McDonald's was ready to go-go-go, they were really kind of driving the bus, but they weren't able to, they didn't have the confidence level to proceed with the other, the other projects concurrently. So, um, they were unable to seek building permits because the city, as the planning commission discussed, and as the city council agreed with, we did not wanna stand alone McDonald's there, we wanted the whole frontage done at the same time. They were unable to do so, so it sits.
How long is that conditional rezoning good for, and tell us, rezone?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm gonna guess at least five years.
Oh, wow.
There is an opportunity for the city to rescind that initial rezoning and put it back to whatever it was.
I'd say it was a good project, it, it, does it look like it's gonna go forward, or?
This was, this was six months ago that we had a discussion with them. Um, so in that time, McDonald's could have been open and they could have had the first phase done, so, we don't, we don't know at this point.
It really comes down to viability of getting tenants for that middle building, I think that's the kicker, so.
Was there a problem with the, the hotel too, that was, that was the other?
That was the second phase, which we didn't, it didn't come in for site plan approval for the second phase. for the second phase, it was just the first phase.
If you recall, it's a good question. The requirement was that the hotel would come back before the planning commission for approval.
So, just, uh, a conditional rezoning approval shall expire following a period of two years from the effective date of the rezoning.
So.
Unless process has been diligently pursued.
Diligently pursued, I mean, what?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and then the, um, city initiates a new rezoning request, so it can rescind back to whatever it was prior to the conditional.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Gottlieb.
No.
Mr. Pickel.
No.
Mr. Stratt.
I'm curious as to, uh, I know what the intent of the P U D when we established it, but it seems to me that a lot of the property that we're dealing with now actually could be separately zoned. The real value of P U D is that they are actually committing to what they're going to do, what they're going to do, whether it's the building, et cetera, right? The configuration and everything else. But we had that one development on Big Beaver that came back to us, and the residential portion that we had approved originally was rescinded and was re-approved. That bothered me. I'm wondering, you know, when we approve something, we should be really sticking to our guns and saying, this is the way it should be. And I know that what had happened was that portion was sold and it probably was reconfigured and a residential developer got involved and they're going to put up what they feel, uh, what is, what they would sell, probably in the lower end. And that's not what we originally had proposed, or was proposed.
I can, I can tell you what, what the residential builder told us, and told the planning commission actually, was that, um, the layout that was initially approved was kind of, it was, it was, it was really kind of creative in the way that it was, that it was laid out, but it wasn't really economically viable. There were, the, the streets were, were wonky.
Yeah, but that's his opinion.
Absolutely.
I mean, everybody has their own opinion on that.
Right.
I, I don't buy that. And, and the thing that bothers me is, is just like, remember when the Kmart site was bought and the guy came in and told us that what was presented before was hogwash? You remember that?
Cartoon.
Cartoon, yeah. I mean, uh, you know, everybody has their own opinion on that, but if we're going to approve, let's stick to the guns, you know, that's, I think we should not be vacillating.
Well, uh, I don't necessarily agree with that. I mean, you can't force a developer to do something.
And then he shouldn't have come in to begin with. I mean, that's, he came in. He came in with that in mind. And I know that that, he came in at a bad time economically, you know, but right now things are booming, or they're a lot better than they were. But everybody has their own opinion. Of course, expressing mine.
No, I've shared my opinions this evening. I'm all good.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Sherr.
Uh, Brendan, anything new about, uh, you said people were talking to you about the commercial development behind the M J R. Uh, I mean, that's just been an eyesore for such a long time. What a glorious piece of property that could be for somebody for the right development in there. And, uh, you, may, maybe even, uh, they could take it up where the multi-story building in there, because you don't have residential, uh, at the back of it. So that, that's kind of all commercial in there.
I wish I had more to report. Uh, we were indicating, you're talking about the, the old Farmer Jack's building, and the actual, the, the owner's actually has a sign-up showing what it could, what it could be developed as, and there's actually, online, there's market material that shows potential layouts. So, um, you know, we have discussed that informally with the applicant, those layouts that they have actively marketed, so I'm not speaking out of school here, it's on their website. Um, but there's no application.
The, the sticking point was they, they want a drive-through there. And a drive-through is a special use, I think, there.
Yeah, they can do a drive-through.
So, and, and so we expressed to them that what they have to do to get a drive-through, and, and so they're going to try to rework the site plan to accommodate a drive-through.
I mean, they showed us, the constants that were, that you can actually go on the website and look at, they, they were pretty, pretty good.
Yeah. One was, one had a drive-through and one didn't have a drive-through.
They were close.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're, they're an application away. We're just, we're just waiting for them to secure tenants or to, you know, to get a comfortable level and submit, and we'll, we'll process them quickly and get them in front of you.
That'd be exciting to see that piece of property take off because.
Yeah.
What a beautiful location.
I was, I was looking at that site today, looking at M J R, looking at that site and just, boy, just waiting to be redeveloped.
Yeah, thank you.
Could you maybe send us the links to those, those sites?
If I can find them, I will, yes.
Okay, we're good. Mr. Van Zijck.
I just want to mention, today is sort of a monumental day for the water and sewer industry. With the Detroit, the Great Lakes Water Authority, you know, it was announced today, and, uh, we've, we've been working on it for months and months and months, starting with the, the emergency manager and Ken Buckfire and the gang from New York, and it finally got resolved by talking directly with Mayor Doug. He's the one that sort of put the deal together, and, uh, he made it happen, it was more reasonable. Uh, there's a lot of concessions made and.
On both sides.
I think it's the best, it's, uh, we've been waiting for this for years. And back when I was first over the county, forty years ago, George Coon was, uh, proposing the regional authority with Comingham, and it's finally happened, so it's, uh, it's going to be very interesting to see how we're all, how it's going to change. I think, um, a lot of pluses and some, a few minuses, but all in all, I think it's a good deal, and, uh, it's going to benefit our whole region.
The real example of compromise.
Oh, yeah.
At the government, the highest levels, yes.
Yeah. I mean, one of the biggest sticking points, if you're at all interested, is that, uh, they had this fifty million dollar a year lease payment.
Right.
And at first, it was to go to the city in the general fund, but, uh, the compromise was that they, um, it was going to go to the, uh, the water and sewer department in the city of Detroit rather than point to the general fund. They're not going to pay for fire trucks or police cars, they're going to pay for improvements to the water and sewer system. So that's really what made it happen. And, um, so it's, it's really a monumental announcement today. I just, I wanted to share it with them.
Maybe we'll see more, you, more at some of those meetings. Or is your work just beginning?
No, it's been pretty busy. Then we had all the floods, the flood of August eleventh, it was a, a three-hundred-year flood. It doesn't happen every day.
Three hundred.
And we're waiting for Musuga and Company to submit all the lawsuits. I don't know, I'm sure you, there's some flooding in the southeast section in Detroit.
We've had a lot of floods, yes. Yes, our fourth one was.
Yeah.
This, that was the largest, biggest rain event in your career, right?
Oh, yeah. We had, our basin at twelve thousand seventy-five had, um, there's a screening room, and then normally the water during the flood event is like ten or twelve feet below the floor level. It was three feet above the floor level at that point, and it's just, it was just unbelievable, the amount of water that went into the Red Run Drain, then ultimately the city of Warren. And it was just, it was just, it was just torrential, it was just unbelievable. And I think ironically, the loss, we, we, and, uh, Lawson had like eighty percent of the homes were flooded, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, they had six inches of rain in the twenty-four hour period, which is, like, it's just monumental, it's just, I've never seen it, it all like that. So we've been addressing that every day. It's been a really impact with the P H two twenty-two flooding, no claims and all those issues. So it's really been dramatic time. We've had, you know, I really never wanted to believe in climate change, but something's changed. We, we don't, we're not used to seeing storms of this magnitude, and we're getting them every couple of weeks now, maybe Wednesday morning night, so.
It's a monsoon season.